Do so, and we will start our meeting with a prayer by Justice.
Our dear, kind Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity we could gather this evening, thank thee for this community, the voices, and those who participate in making this community better. We pray for thy blessings, pray for thy strength, and thank thee for this opportunity, sir, in these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any declaration of conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we're going to go on to public comment. Okay, there's two parts with this public comment. There's public comment and public hearing. If you're here for items nine, 10, or 11, nine has to do with River Bend Estates, 10 is the Mountain Green Sewer Expansion CUP, and 11 is the Como Springs CUP. This is the only time that you'll be allowed to talk because it's an administrative decision, and so it will not be open to a public hearing per se. Having said that, there is one item, we've got a lot of email on this, and we understand it. We also sympathize with it, but unfortunately, we cannot discuss it, and that has to do with the traffic concerns going in on 100 South. That doesn't stop you from getting up during the public comment period and talking about it, but the right venue for this will be the county commission meeting when it gets put on their agenda, which you'll have to watch for when it does get put on their agenda. And so the county commission, if you don't know their email addresses, it's on the website. And just make sure that they are getting your concerns. They're great concerns. We love the public input. We don't catch everything ourselves, and so hearing for the public is really great. So, but just make sure the county commission gets it and that you show up for the county commission. Having said that, are we open for, do I need a motion?
No.
Okay. The floor is open for public comment. The only things that I ask is that you come to the podium, state your name, and about where you live. Doesn't have to be your exact address or anything like that, just so that we can catch it for the public record. And if you ask us any questions, we're not going to answer it unfortunately because it's not a back and forth, but if you do have something that we can answer, we will try to address it when it comes to that particular thing. So, the floor is open.
Real quick, where's the traffic concern?
So, come up to the podium, and please just state your name, just for the record.
Zach Butters. I was just curious where you said the traffic concerns?
Okay, so is this for item 11, for Como Springs CUP?
Well, it's what you just mentioned. You said-
Are you asking if you, when you can comment on traffic, or where the issue is?
No, the one that you just brought up. You said that you're getting-
Oh, no, okay, so we get, so if emails are sent to the planning, the planning office, they are typically forwarded to us so that we can read them. So, we've gotten the petitions and whatnot from the people who had signed them, so-
This is for 100 South in Como Springs.
Yes.
Oh, that's what you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Steve Gale. Actually, just representing Morgan City. Just wondering if you have the copy of the letter that we sent?
So, if, let's make sure it's the correct letter. I don't want to say yes and then find out that it's-
I don't know if we've got the city one.
It'd be the city letter.
I don't remember seeing it.
Could you go see?
Along, I'll call. Way back.
Who sent it?
It would have been me.
Sent by the mayor and the city council.
We received the letter.
It was forwarded.
So, you have that letter?
So, if this was a while ago?
Yeah, August 22nd.
Unfortunately, they sent it to two different emails for me.
I can certainly forward another letter or call, voice in our concerns about the 100 South.
Okay. And absolutely, just if you could, and Josh, could you also make sure that the county commission all see the letter too?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting me take this time. My name's Terry Lawrence. I live adjacent to the Como Springs property. I don't know if it'll help, but I happen to have a copy of that letter that the mayor is talking about with me, if you'd like it.
Do you have enough copies for-
You have it, okay. Okay. So, I'm also here discussing. At the last meeting, the county planning commission meeting, I spoke there also, and member Debbie Sessions questioned the building height restriction in an A-20 zone. The developers are proposing one of the buildings to be at 45 feet. I found the county ordinance code 8-5A-7, which states that all buildings are limited to 35 feet. Item 2, under the heading in the packet, under proposed improvements, there's a reference to recreational activities on Como Lake. However, under their resort rules, and item 26 in bold type, by the way, it states that swimming, boating, or rafting at Como Springs Lake is prohibited. So, which one is it? There seems to be a conflict there. Also, under resort rules, item number 4 states, no stays in one site longer than 90 days. Now, at the county commission meeting, they discussed this, and wondered if 90 days per calendar year would be more appropriate. And this would prevent site hopping, or it would even stop de facto mobile home park, which is what it is right now. I also found some references to that in the condition use permit codes, section 8-6-25, major campgrounds for non-commercial use. Let's see, page B10, it says, now this is under major campgrounds for non-commercial use. It states, "Use of the campground shall not include the storage of vacant recreational vehicles after the occupants have returned home, nor the long-term use of campsites over 90 days per calendar year." Also, under recreational vehicle courts and commercial campgrounds, which I think this is worded 12 under, on page D11, it says, "No recreational vehicle shall be allowed in the court, nor camp user in a campground for more than 45 days in any calendar year. Besides the approved common facilities shown on the plan, only recreational vehicles and camp users may occupy the facility. Mobile homes, construction equipment, outdoor storage are prohibited." Now, that led me to number 4, which was the hot button issue, of course, and that's access. And I believe you don't want me to speak about that. Is that correct?
This is public comment. You can talk about anything that you'd like, but we can't address it, unfortunately.
All right. Well, so obviously, the big issue is moving the main access from 500 East to 100 South, or even using that as a loop road. Now, obvious, to us, this is a bad idea. It's irresponsible, and it's downright dangerous to that neighborhood. The city opposes it, which is right here in this letter from Morgan City Corporation. The citizens oppose it. There's several letters, as you know, that were sent. And the big one is this neighborhood petition. There are 163 signatures on this petition so far, out of 168 contacts. Now, that's 97% of the residents against this idea. Now, the political parties, you know, they talk about mandates. This is a mandate. At the last commission meeting I was at, Blaine Fackrell made a pretty surprising statement. He said he'd been talking with the owners of Como Springs for the last year and a half, considering the access up 100 South to Como. He was trying to convince them this was a bad idea. And so, in the end, his final statements were, "Well, you know, if Morgan City is okay with it, then what am I going to say?" Well, it's pretty obvious now that Morgan City is not okay with it. Morgan City government's not okay with it, and the citizens are not okay with it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to our item number 6. Proposed zone map amendment to approximately 1.49 acres, going from RR1 and A-20 to town center.
Application number 22.050 is a rezoning request submitted by the Hanselman. It's the Hanselman rezoning. The property is located on the south side of Old Highway Road, approximately where the ID4 interchange is going to go in, to the east of there. To the north and west of this property is the Sinclair and the Trappers Loop intersection of Old Highway Road. It's approximately 1.49 acres in size. The current zoning is RR1 and A-20. The general plan shows that the, this area is anticipated to be town center-type uses. They are proposing to rezone it to our town center zoning district. Staff has reviewed it. We are recommending approval as it is in line with the general plan and the goals of our zoning ordinance. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Not for staff.
With the applicant, is the applicant here?
Doesn't look like it.
I had a question for the applicant, sorry, but that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into public hearing for item number 6.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are in public hearing, so if you are here to talk about item number 6, which is a proposed zone map amendment of approximately 1.49 acres, going from RR1 and A-20 to town center, located at approximately 5055 West Old Highway Road, is your time to speak. Same rules as before.
Yeah, my name's Lindsay Ball. So, I live in Trappers Loop. Curious, who is the applicant?
Diana Hanselman is the applicant owner on record.
Is she still the current owner?
That would be caught somewhere else. I mean, I assume that's going to be-
Yeah, we require owner's signature on all applications for re-
Yeah, I tried to buy the property and was outbid a month and a half ago. Well, not outbid, but not given time. As far as I know, this applicant is not the actual person. My concern about that would be this person who sold the property, Hanselman, that she's the one who has heritage and history in Morgan County, and things pass very easily for her, and that this buyer that has come in has wanted to use the name to get this pushed easier. Also, do we know what the usage is intended to be?
It'd be covered under the zoning. This is just a rezone?
Just a zone only.
This is zoning only.
Okay.
The property owner had to sign an affidavit in order for the person that applied to do that, to provide the application. So, the property owner has signed off on the person that actually applied for the application to do this.
Okay, so the property owner has somebody else come in. I'm just trying to figure out how to pull strings and get things done.
As an authorized agent.
Okay.
It doesn't matter who you are. Everybody gets treated the same. I don't, I don't know her. I don't know the other person. I wouldn't treat them any different.
I'm just curious. I mean, I'm new here. I mean, my kids have blood that go back to the founders in Croydon. But I'm just a new person. I don't really know. I just, I'm curious, just want to, you know, I hear both things, right? I just want to find out a little bit, so-
If you want to learn more, you can call our office, and I can explain the process to you.
Okay. So, the person, just to be clear, the person who owns the property doesn't have to, they can commission somebody else to do the rezoning application? Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other comments for public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go out in public hearing for item number 6.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, discussion amongst ourselves. Any concerns?
No.
I don't really have concerns, because it's town center, which is-
Exactly what it's future land use is.
Supposed to be for.
Mr. Chair, can I go forward with the proposal here? I move forward the positive recommendation to the county commission for the Hanselman rezone map amendment, application 22.050, changing 1.49 acres from RR1 to, and A-20 to town center, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated September 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All vote. Motion passes. Item number 7, proposed zone map amendment for approximately 5.91 acres.
Okay. Application 22.052, the Ostler rezone. This obviously is a rezoning application. It's a legislative decision. It is located on the north side of Old Highway Road, in between the LDS Church and the Sinclair gas station, pretty close to the previous application. The acreage of the property is 5.91 acres in size. It's currently zoned RR1 and A-20. The general plan designation for this property is also town center. The applicant is requesting a rezone to RM15, which would be high-density multifamily, which is in line with the town center general plan description. Staff has reviewed this. We are recommending approval. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
On the town center, did we require some commercial property also to be in?
So, you have your town center general plan designation, and you have a town center zoning district. They're two totally separate things.
Okay.
The town center zoning district requires a certain percentage of the development to have multifamily and commercial. The town center general plan designation does not state that. The town center general plan designation states that it could be multifamily, commercial, or a combination of those uses.
Okay. Thanks.
Does that answer that question? The general plan is not a document that provides requirements. They are discretionary. It's guideline-only. The zoning ordinance, on the other hand, is mandated because it's adopted by ordinance.
So, this is going to require them to have a specific percentage of-
No, if they rezoned it to the town center zoning district, they would be required to have a percentage of multifamily and a percentage of commercial. Because they're rezoning it to RM15 multifamily, which is described as an allowed use in the future land use description of town center. See, this is why typically, you don't want your general plan land use designations to be the same as your zoning designations because it creates confusion. Yeah. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move, we go into-
Okay, sorry.
Public hearing.
Have a motion and have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. We are in public hearing for item number 7, which sounds remarkably like item number 6.
Tina Kelly.
Hi, Tina.
Mountain Green. So, this application is for RM15, not town center. And this is a legislative action, not an administrative action. So, your legislative action of a rezone is the one where you have the most leeway. You can say yes or no. You can say I don't like it. You can't ask them to give you a specific concept or anything like that. The RM15 does different from town center, and the town center has a development agreement that goes along with it. The RM15 does not. Having the town center designation allows you to negotiate some things for the county and the community. The RM15 does not. That's how I separate the uses in my mind. I don't really think about the general plan designation. I think about the definition of the uses. And for something that's high-density, and it is considered like a town center, I would think that, and I can't make the applicant, make an application for town center, but I would think that the town center would be the better designation for the community and the county as a whole. And that's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll take a motion.
I move with our public-
I'm the applicant. Do you want to hear from me at all, or?
After, cut out.
I move we go out of public hearing.
Have a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we'll hear from the applicant now?
Hi, Mr. Murphy Cox. This is, I'm heading here. So, sorry, guys. Blair Gardner, address is 6260 East Hopps Lane. I actually live in Huntsville currently. I've developed in Mountain Green and Peterson in the Morgan County area. I've been heavily involved in a lot of land use and different things. So, I've not acquired this property. I want to be very clear. In fact, the other gentleman was asking a question. I'm probably the best guy to talk to, so. But part of the requirement of purchasing is what can I actually do with it, right? As a land developer. Now, you know, if I'm the first guy in town, I'd like to think I have not clout, but a little bit more. I'm very heavily involved in the success of the community of Mountain Green. I'm currently developing some commercial flex space at the end of the runway. We're in process of that, so I'm here. I'm developing. Ironically enough, the property previous, I had interest in as well. So, it's interesting that that gentleman had the same interest. So, with that being said, the RM15 does allow me to not be forced to do any type of commercial application. Now, with that being said, part of the reason why that designation, the RM15, is what I'm requesting, and out of respect for the seller, the challenge with any development is, if you're going to pay a certain price for the ground, you've got to be able to make it work, both on a financial scale, as well as the community scale. So, my intention for the property, in full transparency, is to do a very, very, when I say affordable, we'll see what the market is when it's actually vertical, but an affordable way for people to have residency here in the community. Part of the interest that I've had from certain residences are, Blair, can we, if you do townhomes there, which is what my intention is on some level, we want to buy one today because we don't think our kids are going to be able to afford to live in Mountain Green by the time they're ready to buy. So, just know that with development and change and everything that's going on in the community, and I know you see this all the time because you're right in the middle of it, but I plan on doing a very responsible development there. I actually did provide the county, which again, this isn't necessarily the most appropriate time, with different concepts of what potentially could be there on other developments that I've done in the past. So, but just to be fully clear, and I appreciate Tina's comments because they're very important, and I understand them completely. But for my intention on the property, I want to be able to do something that has some multi-use development in that. And that's one of the reasons I went from the RM15 zone rather than just the other one, which gets, town center, which gets confusing, mainly because if, if that's the case, it does not make it a feasible property because of a commercial, the amount of commercial that would have to be required within that property doesn't make it feasible, which means the seller loses, the community loses, and I lose. So, the RM15 is what, is what I'm requesting, and I'm hoping for a positive vote. So, thank you.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant? Sorry.
I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Discussion amongst ourselves.
Yeah, so I think that if we have our town center, and the purpose of the town center area is to be multi-use, that for me, going to the RM15, I would rather see it be zoned town center so that we can have control over that commercial property, or that percentage, especially how, especially because this property is right on the main road. So, if we're going to fill our entire town center with houses, then why do we make a town center?
The town center district is to the east of Trappers Loop, and that's-
Only to the east?
It's to the west, too.
Is that the district, or is that the future land use designation?
Future land use. It'll also have Rome as a town center development, in the gravel pit.
I'm looking at the future land use, and that entire area is under town center.
The problem is, on small parcels, it's really hard to do commercial and residential on what it was at 5.9 acres, 6 acres, where 35% has to be commercial. It makes it difficult. On large parcels, town center zone works really well.
So, how many large parcels are in that area? Or is this all going to be sold as-
There's still some-
Jokes of small parcels where everybody wants to come in?
No, you've got the big-
R15.
Below, on south of Old Highway Road. Major parcels.
Those are my concerns.
Hey, acres you're suggesting? So, 5.91 acres?
Yeah, if I can address that, if you don't mind, yes?
Go up to the microphone.
Do I use the laser? I might want to over there just point, but essentially, and I completely respect the position. However, given the location of this parcel, and it's kind of on the outskirts, tied to the LDS church and then into residential, when you're talking how you sprawl, right, town centers and commercial districts, typically, it's the high-end commercial, retails, all your shopping centers, all your eateries and so forth, and then it kind of expands into a multifamily, and then from multifamily into single family, and then expands out to their new recreational and your agricultural. So, with the flow of Mountain Green, given its limited size, the flow this way, this property actually is- the flow this way, this property actually is quite conducive to a multifamily residential where most of the township commercial, one of the reasons I had interest in here was because most of all of this across here, along with the townhomes that are being built with the Rome, as well as Doug over here with the Lee's Market, is most of your commercial districts and uses are going to be on this side. Now, this, in full transparency, this property could be identified within the township center and not be under the RM one five zone. But you also have multifamily that's currently on the main road. Because I understand this is still UDOT, but it's potentially would go back into the county. Is that correct? Once the light, I even four quarter goes through?
It's UDOT from Trappers Loop to the canyon.
Yeah, from Trappers Loop to the canyon. So with that being said, this actually from, even taking me out of the equation, and if you're just looking at where you would potentially put multifamily uses, this particular area is most likely the best use for it. The farther you go over here, it becomes a little bit more limited because of all the commercial applications. And most commercial, depending on what you're doing, right, whether it's grocery stores or hotels or C stores with gas stations, want to be coupled together for flow, for traffic, for unit counts, all those different things. So it's one of the reasons why this was more appealing to me than going on the east side and trying to put in a type of density there.
I think the one other thing that I have to think about too is we want a, and this is not trying to make the decision or like influence the decision, but we have to think about it has to flow from.
Partial to residential.
To residential somehow. Yeah. Puff, puff is not the right word, but it just kind of has like a natural flow to it that as you go from the commercial side to the, to the residential side, that it's, it makes some logical sense. Because, you know, you don't want to put a fourteen thousand foot mansion on a, on a parcel like that. It would just be easier.
I remember next to the Lee's down on the, the lower east side there. We also have townhomes approved for there right now. Is that correct?
There's the multifamily, yes.
Yes, RM 15.
And that's just right next to the RR one.
By Lee's, where the Lee's Market's going in.
It's in the Town Center. It's that.
There's the multifamily. On that other end, yes.
Okay.
So any other discussion amongst ourselves? I mean, we've only got one thing to look at. I mean, whether we.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for a positive recommendation to the County Commission for the Ossler Rezone Map Amendment, Application Number twenty-two point zero five two, changing five point nine one acres from RR one and eight twenty to RM 15 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated September twenty-second, 2022.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight.
Application number twenty-two point three. Five three is a rezone application submitted by Tanya Marina Eldridge. It is located, actually due north of the property that we just discussed. It's approximately eleven acres in size. Its current zoning is eight twenty. The general plan shows it as a designation for Town Center. The applicants are requesting to rezone it to Town Center. We've reviewed the application. We've reviewed the zoning ordinance and the general plan, and we are recommending approval.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? I'm sorry, we didn't need to go into public hearing. I'm sorry?
I'm going to be going to public hearing for item number eight.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So this is for item number eight, which is basically directly north of the previous property. Are you the applicant? Okay, you'll talk after the public hearing, which is going to end very soon. Oh, I spoke too soon.
So I'm Jackie Woody. I live on Trappers Loop Road. I'm a Warner. So we have adjacent property just to the east of this site. Kind of a light brown right there. I'm not sure what you've zoned that in the top, in, on the future use map. Can you see the light up there? The light brown is?
RR ten. Right, residential five acres.
Yeah, I guess our concern is, is we're surrounded on three sides by Town Center and this little residential piece right there that we have. We actually have beehives there that they come in every year. They've been there for several years. We've put cattle down there. We're just concerned of having people and a large amount of people where you, where we're a little island right there in the middle of it.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm looking for a motion.
I move we go to a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, is the applicant here? I'm sorry?
I am.
Okay. Would you like to talk?
If you have any question.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for Josh. So this one is going to be thirty-five percent commercial once it's developed.
It would have to follow the zoning ordinance exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant regarding access. Can you, yeah, maybe come up and just address. I remember a discussion with the Smith property on their rezone that there was some discussion on access, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, if you look at the map there, Cemetery Road goes right in through Smith's property, through our property to the cemetery. That's the primary access to there.
You have an easement?
The land, the road was dedicated by the previous landlords in the nineteen forties.
Okay. It appeared landlocked, so yeah. I can remember there was some discussion about it.
Oh, about it being landlocked?
No, about access with that Cemetery Road, but I wasn't sure on the details.
Yeah, but we have property on both sides of the Cemetery Road, so.
It's the Cemetery Road?
Any other questions for? Okay, thank you. Any discussion amongst ourselves? I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for a positive recommendation to the County Commission for the Eldridge Rezone Map Amendment, Application Number twenty-two point zero five three, changing eleven acres from eight twenty to Town Center based on the findings listed in the staff report dated September twenty-second, 2022.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh, I should be voting?
I've, I've voted with the majority every time.
Yeah, because.
Yeah. Can we be four? Okay, item number nine. Ever been a state?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone item number nine.
Do we have a specific date or just until?
So we've been in discussion with the applicant for that application, and they are working through some issues with UDOT right now. So maybe just continue it to a future meeting, not to a date certain. When they get the UDOT approval, we will re-notice that application.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone item number nine. Definitely to a meeting in the future. No, definitely.
Definitely, definitely to. Okay. I have a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, Mountain Green Sewer Expansion CUP.
Application Number twenty-two point zero four five is a conditional use permit request by the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. They are requesting approval to expand their facilities by adding additional buildings, some clarifying tanks and an aerobic digester. Staff has reviewed the application. We have had the county engineer look at the plans. He commented and said that he had no issues with the plans. So we are recommending approval for the conditional use permit so they can expand their public utility.
Are there any questions for staff?
Where's this going to be?
Uh, maybe the applicant could speak to that? If they're here.
Between the ponds and the freeway.
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
Actually, I don't know.
I think he would have, or she would have thrown their hand up by now.
I don't see.
Okay.
So this is just an expansion, correct?
It's just an expansion of their existing facility.
Anticipating. More production or?
Right. By expanding the facility, they can handle more.
Don't laugh. Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst ourselves here?
No, I, to me, this was just heavy engineering and the engineer's okay.
Yep. Okay, I am looking for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to, are we recommending or are we deciding?
This is a C three.
This is C three, so it's a recommendation.
Okay. I move to forward a positive recommendation of approval to the County Commission for the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District Expansion Project Conditional Use Permit, Application Number twenty-two point zero four five, located at four fifty-four forty-five West Old Highway Road, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated September twenty-second, 2022.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I said aye, by the way. I gotta remember to do that. And item number. Eleven. Where's Bailey?
I want to, I want to see that letter.
Oh, from the city?
Yeah. I don't remember getting, getting it or.
I can't, I can't find it in my emails either.
Hey Bailey, could you, could you forward the letter from the city again to us?
I can't do it from my computer, but hold on. Okay.
I can forward it to somebody.
Yep. Got it. Found it. Thank you.
Okay. Ready, Josh?
Okay. Uh, application number twenty-one point zero one four has come before you before. This is the Como Springs Conditional Use Permit Request. You forwarded a recommendation of approval to the County Commission. County Commission reviewed that request and remanded it back to you to review a couple of things that are found in our code. Those items were to approve the applicant's management plan, determine the amount of the maintenance guarantee bond, and approve that amount. It would then go back to the County Commission for their final review and approval of, or denial of the conditional use permit. So tonight, it was remanded back to you to review those items, to review their management plan and approve it, and then the guarantee bond.
So those are the only things that we're going, that we're allowed to discuss tonight, actually, on this is the management plan and the, the bond.
Right. So in my discussion with the county attorney, it was remanded back for specific reasons. And then the final decision, because you forwarded it to, to the County Commission for them to make the final decision, they would have to make that final decision after tonight's meeting.
So they're the ones that will make the decision about the road?
About the conditional use permit in general, yeah.
But they're the ones that could address the concerns about petitioning the road. We cannot.
Right. So they remanded it back to you for specific items. So that's what we have to address tonight.
Do you have the original date of when this was here? Like when we forwarded a positive recommendation?
My, my remembrance, because I was here in, in July, and we met in July. July fourteenth is when you forwarded that recommendation. It went to the August second meeting when I was not here.
Okay. I was just looking at the letter from the city, which is August twenty-second, so. That's after both of our meetings. Okay.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Um, yeah, how do we, how do we do a bond?
Uh, that is a very good question. In this instance, you are going to be approving a bond that the county will hold the monies for, for private improvements for the maintenance of those items, which is basically the landscaping, the drives, things like that. I've never seen something like that in any other jurisdiction I've ever worked in. So you'll have to determine if the amount that the, that the applicant's engineer has proposed is sufficient. I did not get word from our engineer on that estimate yet. So you could forward a recommendation to the County Commission that Mark Miller sign off on that estimate before approval handed, if they choose to approve the conditional use permit.
Well, we don't know anything about bonds. Like, we're not the ones that should be making that decision. So we haven't heard from.
Unfortunately, our code says that the planning commission is the body that approves.
And determines.
And determines. The maintenance guarantee bond.
It's that rule.
I would not disagree. But it's in our code, and since it's in our code, we need to follow our code.
Might be something for a code amendment in the future.
That would be for you or the County Commission to determine. I can't do that.
Okay, I guess, I guess let's hear from the applicant and see what they think.
A little bit of deja vu.
I know you.
Yes, yes. I do want to see. So it's good to be back before you. Gina Grandpory, I am representing the applicant, Grant Mappi, for Como Springs Resort. So this has been a long time coming. The application was submitted oh, close to three years ago. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of information. But I do want to address. But I do want to address really quickly, just for information purposes, and to show you some areas in the code that will allow us to address the access. I've lived in the neighborhood, so we lived off of Imperial. Our kids walked to school on 100 South. So we understand as rest, longtime residents of Morgan, that that is a concern. However, there is a code in the Section 886 that requires a 36-foot access. Now, and just to give you information on 883, Section D, sorry, not D. It is Section F. Conditions of approval, or approval conditions for any conditional proof, conditional permit, conditional use permit. There are, there is an allowance for an exception. So the applicant can submit a request or petition the County Commission to allow an exception to the rules within the conditional use permit chapter. So that is what the intention of the applicant is, is to petition the council or the commission to, to give an exception to that 36-foot rule of access and to use 100 South as an egress. There still has to remain that access, still has to be available. We, we understand that having campers that have gone along Commercial Street to access Como Springs for decades over that bridge is where it's always been. And people are going to continue to do it. It's, we would have to shut off that access and gate it. And then that creates additional problems with egress. So we will petition the council, the County Commission to, to, for that exception on that rule. But we will still have to have that 100 South access. We lived at the campground, and so we had to direct people around that were uncomfortable with that bridge. So, but the traffic, it was very far and few between. So we still have to have that access off of 100 South. Not only for road traffic, but for the water line that is being put in to service the, the project. So with that said, we will address that as the code allows for that petition and for that exception. And there are specific rules to, to do that. So we'll work with staff on submitting that, that petition for an exception to that rule, as well as to the timeline as far as when these improvements will be completed. And that puts us into this guarantee. You're absolutely right. I don't wish this upon anyone because this is very poorly written. You know, this is the first time in the history of Morgan County for this ordinance to even be put into effect. And to answer Mr. Lawrence's concerns regarding the ambiguity and the contradiction of the code, I've, I've scoured the code on this regarding campgrounds and RV parks. And there is such an contradiction in code with the supplementary code and the conditional use permit code and the, and the requirements for a recreational vehicle park. It's been lumped in with the code for mobile home parks. And that's not what this is. This is not a mobile home park. This is a, this is an RV park. It's a resort. It is there to bring back, try and restore what was there before. Obviously, that's not going to be 100%, you know, correct historical preservation. But that's the intention of the owner is to breathe some life back into Como Springs and bring, bring back some economy back into, into the community. So this guarantee, and I just want to go over the code because Josh is correct in that this is a, it's a permanent retention, it's a bond for the maintenance. So I just want to read through this in order to help you understand the management plan that we've submitted. And I'm sorry, you just got that last night really late. Hopefully, you had a chance. It's not very big to look at that. But it will, I mean, and it's got room for improvement, obviously. I think it hits the main points of the intention of what the code is. And so what the code states. So in 88, let's see, what is it? 88D, or yes, D7 guarantees for a mobile home park and recreational vehicle parks. Adequate and reasonable guarantees must be provided as determined by the Planning Commission and governing body for permanent retention of open spaces and for the maintenance of roadways, storage facilities, service facilities, and landscaping resulting from the application of these regulations. Guarantees shall be in the form of a bond or a cash deposit in the sum of, determined by the Planning Commission, which form must be approved by the governing body and by the county attorney. The basis for providing assurance of compliance will be a management plan developed by the applicant and approved by the, the Planning Commission and governing body that will outline standards of operation, remedies for failure to comply with those standards, and a single responsible person or entity for the administration and dealing with the county. And then it lists a few of those requirements to be covered in this management plan. So that's what we've tried to do. Again, it's not perfect. We can make edits. One thing I do ask in your motion that you, that we add a line in there, again, to answer some of those questions that Mr. Lawrence brought up regarding the resort, resort rules. And you'll see in the management plan that we do have a phasing plan in there. Obviously, these, these improvements are going to take some time. A year is what's allowed. We are going to ask for an exception to that because of materials, time of year that it's going into effect, that type of thing. This is a multi-phase project. You've got RV pads. There are tent sites. There's cottages or cabins, and there's a lodge and a restaurant. And so those things are going to take some time, especially with the influx in the economy and so forth. But those rules, the resort rules, are for the current operation. So those obviously need to be amended, but we do not want to amend those until the phase, until some of those phases are complete. We don't want people, some of the current guests to go and play in the Como, Como Lake because it is not ready for them to be playing in that lake. It's not safe for them. And so those rules have been specifically put in there for their safety. So we, we do need to add a note on that, that the management plan and these rules will be modified as phases come online. Because obviously, those rules will change as the resort grows. Right now, they are specifically for what is currently in use. The, as far as the time of, the time and stays, it was clear by Mr., by Commissioner McConnell in the commission meeting that it be 90 days per calendar year. It doesn't state that in the code specifically under the recreational vehicle park code. But obviously, we can, we can discuss that further. The supplementary code is not applied because the land use table doesn't match and say use the commercial campground code. It says it's conditional use permit. And therefore, we're having to follow the conditional use permit code. And specifically 886 regarding recreational vehicle parks for the RV park. So with all of that said, what are your questions? I know there's a lot. We have, Josh had said that the county engineer hasn't looked at this. This isn't a performance bond. So basically, what is being required of this? What's being required of this, and of course, I lose my spot in this guarantee, is for, is for permanent retention of open space and for the maintenance of roadways. So maintenance, not improvements, but maintenance. Maintenance of storage facilities, maintenance of service facilities, and maintenance of landscaping. I don't think the county, and this is, again, it needs to be, and Commissioner Merrily, that's exactly what needs to happen, is this needs to be amended. Because I don't, this is a, this is a commercial campground. And I don't believe the county is wanting to take over a private property, a private business. And so, and I don't think they're in the market for that. And so how long is this bond to be retained? From what the code says is permanently. But I don't, I don't believe that's the intention of it. The applicant is dedicated to this project. He's spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already to try and get this property ready for this development. And, I mean, there's been a lot of work in, in taking down old buildings that were dilapidated. It was, it drew a lot of shady activity before Mr. Mackey went in there and cleaned it up. So this management plan is very basic. But the price that, the cost for that bond was estimated on the maintenance of that per year. So that $58,200 is a cost estimate for these services. And we tried to break down, obviously, we can't, I mean, there's a lot of, that's going to go into this as things come online. But additional employees, there is a breakdown of that organizational structure, who is responsible, and so forth. So we feel like it's, it meets the code, but you are the deciding body on that. So. Questions? That's a lot of information.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question about your rules.
Yes.
I want to know why you say that a pet cannot be tethered for over two hours.
So because we were managing the campground for River Bridge RV as well as for Como Springs Resort, we had campers that would tether their animals for all day, all night. And it's just not fair for that animal to be like that. In a splitting heat, they would disappear. And obviously, that's going to be curved because people aren't going to be living there. It is a transient park. And so obviously, that won't be the case. But we had specific reasons why we put that code in there, or that rule in there.
So there is smoking allowed except within 25 feet of the restrooms and showers?
Yes, there is. We had, we had issues with people smoking in the restrooms. But it's a, it's an RV park. It's hard to, people are outside. It's, I mean, it's hard to walk around and say, you can't smoke by your trailer. Because it is a private, kind of a private space when they rent it.
Item number 14, can you actually evict someone if they have a medical marijuana card?
I don't know the state rules on that. This was...
I would almost say no, but I would check on it.
There was some shady stuff that was going on that we, we strived really hard to clean up over the time that we were there. I don't know if we can per state laws. I don't know. I would have to look into that.
I would just be surprised if you could, if they had a card.
Yeah. The problem that we had there is the, the characters that we had come and stay there, it wasn't for a medical use.
Right.
It was for recreational.
Anything else for the applicant?
No.
No, I do have one question, Josh. So speaking of the bond, I mean, is your reading of our regulations that it's an annual in perpetuity? Or is it a one-time? You put it down until you get, you get yourself up and running so that the county's not left holding the bag for some unfinished property?
It's really not clear. I had conversations about this with the county attorney. He emailed me just the other day. Let me find his email.
It's so weird you guys got your emails in here. It's weird that you couldn't get your emails on those computers.
Oh, I could. It just hasn't been set up. Because I've never had to really access my emails.
Because other businesses, we don't require this type of bonding, do we?
The types of bonding that we require are improvement bonds. So for subdivisions, for, for multifamily projects where they're improving public right-of-way or they're putting in infrastructure, we would require them to, prior to recording, either post a bond for 110% of the total amount.
Which is refunded to them once they're done, correct?
Correct. The 10% is held after the, 10% of that is held after the improvements are completed as a warranty, where we can cash it if there's a failure. And then we can go in and we can repair it. However, state law changed to allow developers to put in the infrastructure improvements before recording, which would reduce the amount of bond that they would post. So if they put all the infrastructure in prior to even recording the subdivision, technically, they don't have, they would only have close to 10% warranty. In this case, this isn't an improvement bond. This is a maintenance guarantee on private property. So you have to ask yourself, if the applicant were to walk away from the project, why, why does the county want to be involved in maintaining an RV park?
And there's actually additional code in Section 883 of the Conditional Use Permit Requirements. In the, in the event that the applicant or the, the conditional use permit is violated and the County Commission decides to revoke that permit, all of the, the, it says, let's see, and, where is it? Sorry. There is, there is a section in there that talks about how there has to be a removal of things for, for any other use to happen on there.
So I have another question. In the general plan that's coming out for Morgan City, Como Springs area is being recommended to be annexed. So if it is, then what happens to this bond? It just gets transferred to the city?
I don't know if the city's codes include this provision, so.
They don't include, yeah. They don't include anything on an RV park.
If it were annexed, we'd probably refund the money.
If we're in a good mood, right?
Technically, you could set the guarantee amount at zero if you don't want the county to be involved in ongoing maintenance. It's up to you to approve the set amount. So you can either approve, approve what their engineer estimate for ongoing maintenance is. Our code doesn't say per year. It just says adequate and reasonable guarantees must be provided as determined by the Planning Commission.
Well, I want to call zero adequate, or the other word you said.
Well, it depends on if you want to be involved, if you want the county to be involved or not. I'm not saying you have to do that. I'm, I'm just saying that is one option. The other option is you approve the engineer's estimate that they are proposing. Our engineer hasn't reviewed that. He has it, but I haven't received an answer regarding whether he feels that that's adequate or reasonable, or even the timeframe that that would cover.
So we do set one at zero. They walk away. The county gets it because it's not annexed. We just have a big pile of...
We don't get anything.
Yeah, it's still private property.
It's private property. We wouldn't even get the property.
Yeah, the county wouldn't get it unless they got it.
Right. If they walk away and that property foreclosed upon, the bank takes it.
And it's sold.
Right. I don't see it.
I mean, they're not doing, are you doing road improvements?
We are doing road improvements, but again, they're private.
It's not included in the bond.
No.
No.
Because it's not an improvement, that's not what, that's not what this is about. This is not an improvement bond. This is a maintenance guarantee. That's why this code is so ambiguous and so poorly applied. Because it, I mean, you haven't seen it before. So you can't change it. haven't seen it before, so you can't change it unless you know and have had that problem.
An improvement bond on this development would be if they were required to expand One Hundred South or the Commercial Street, if they were required to improve those roads to a certain standard, we would collect an improvement bond for those improvements.
Right. So, and the city is requiring a bond for the improvements of that water line, um, being ran into the city, so they are requiring the hundred and ten percent, or the hundred, the ten percent warranty guarantee, I believe, the applicant, well, I don't know if they're, I don't know that, but I know that they are requiring a bond.
But that doesn't have anything to do with that, we're just doing-
No, has nothing to do with this.
Correct.
Okay, so here's the next question. I wish someone from the council was here, or the commission. If we do set it at zero-
They can, they can up it, correct? Or do they have to take our determination?
The planning commission is the authority body setting the guarantee.
So, so if we set it up zero, then they'll accept it and not send it back to us?
Right, if you set it at zero with the findings that you don't believe the county should be involved in the maintenance of private property.
That's exactly why we shouldn't have it.
Well, we don't require any other businesses to do this.
Nope.
No.
This is, this seems a little off.
I personally think sometime in the past, someone got burned with an RV park, and they're like, "We're gonna fix it the next time," and this is what's-
So, I have a question. We're gonna be, again, moving a forward recommendation for this CUP again, or do we, that's what the-
No, you are-
That's what the motion is in our packet.
Right, so it-
So, that's confusing.
You are approving the management plan or not approving the management plan?
Okay.
You are approving the guarantee amount and setting that amount. The decision for whether to approve this is in the hands of the county commission. So, the conditional use permit needs to be approved by the county commission.
Correct.
But you approve the guarantee amount tonight.
Well, it's just that those motions were-
Right.
Recommended here.
Do they have to be individual, or could they be lumped?
Can we do one motion, or do you need them separate?
You can do either one. Just include everything in the motion that you want to do.
This is why I included the, um, guarantee in the management plan.
I vote zero.
I'm more for zero, too.
If that's an option.
Yeah.
One million dollars.
One million dollars!
I didn't know that was an option, that's a completely different, we should've started with that.
If we're not requiring it of any, anybody else, then the, the regulations are ambiguous at best, I think, uh, I mean, they're, you're not doing, other than the water lines you're, which you're already bonding-
We're not doing any public improvements, other than the water line.
Yeah, and you're already bonding with the city over that one, anyway.
And there is a, a public access easement for that water line, or a utility easement? It's not an access, it's not a public access easement, it's a utility easement that will have to be recorded for that water line, so that the city can access it, because it does, because that line does belong to the city.
Okay. Are you ready?
Well, I've got it about the rest of the management plan.
Okay.
Okay, the manag- How do we refer to the management plans that wasn't in our packet, just as presented in our meeting this date?
Well-
Well, it wasn't included in the packet, but it wasn't provided by you on file.
Right. But we can just say as presented tonight, as presented. September twenty-second meeting.
Well, but if we approve the management plan and their, um, bond is in it-
We can make a separate motion that the bond, that we determine and-
So, the management plan with the exception of the private guarantee bond?
Yep.
Is that it? Are we ready?
Yep.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Can I just make my own motion, or are you doing?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
In regards to the county commission, um, purpose of remand on the Como Springs CUP, item number one, approve the applicant's management plan. Item number two, determine the amount of the maintenance guarantee bond, and item number three, or determine the amount, and item number three, approve the amount. I move that we approve the management plan without the applicant's private guarantee bond summary, and with the understanding that rule will change as phases are put in, and that the maintenance guarantee bond be zero dollars.
And that we approve that amount?
And that we approve that zero amount, based on the findings in the staff report, the presentation on nine-twenty-two-twenty-two.
Do you want to include anything about, uh, the engineer's approval?
No, because we're keeping it at zero. If we were getting, doing an amount, we would need his consent part of it.
So, um, in regards to the first part, any changes to the, um, management plan would probably need further approval?
No, I mean, if you roll into your approval of the management plans that additional rules can be added or modified as future phases are added, then that would cover it.
Okay. Well, so let's say we have an evil applicant, and they decide to let recreational marijuana use sicker in Como Springs, because we have, because we have given them carte blanche at this point, where we don't even review the changes to their management plan.
That, well, that violates federal and state law.
I'm sure there are a lot of things that would violate federal or state law that, that we would find unconscionable.
This isn't California or Arizona.
Well, if it broke the law, the cops would take care of it, and if it didn't, it would be up to the-
Yeah, but I'm-
Park manager to-
Sure, I mean, if, I, I'm just worried that if we give them carte blanche, because a lot of these things are, uh, like the two-hour tether rule was your own, you, you asked about that, that doesn't, that's, that's not in, in adherence to any, any laws, per se, uh, but, you know, the smoking within twenty-five feet, a, a lot of these things, um, that we're approving tonight, I don't wanna sit here and go through the whole list, but if they change something that, um, we would not have approved tonight, I think we should at least be able to say yea or nay, planning commission or planning staff. Uh, I mean, we could say that they have to be notified of any changes, uh, to those rules.
Yeah, but then are-
The problem is enforcement of that, it's, that would be different to enforce.
More than anything, the rules are gonna tighten up more than they're going to loosen up, as, I mean, Leon wants a world-class resort, and those type of resorts are not going to loosen up the rules that we already have in place, they're going to tighten up more than anything.
And before I second it, can you add the finding that the county is not involved in maintenance of private property? That's our finding for the determination.
Right. Yeah, let's, please add that to my motion.
Can we also, well, can we also put in there, too, that, um, we don't require this of other businesses? I mean, I think that's a-
Other commercial businesses.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's a huge fact, if you, it just doesn't seem right that we would only pick on one business. Okay.
So, I'll second that.
We got a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
You wanna read that back to us, basically?
Yes. No.
Don't.
After the tape.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll listen to the minutes again.
Gotcha. We'll approve it next time.
Okay, I've got a motion, I've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? By the way, am I. All opposed?
Take it.
And motion passes. That was easy. Okay, so, that, that is kind of, kind of the more formal stuff, uh, we're gonna have a work session here, it's not gonna last very long, I don't think, but I said that once before, and somebody walked up to the microphone and proved me wrong. Uh, so, if you've ever wanted to be a planning commissioner, we're gonna be working on area plan updates, and your foot in the door is, is going to be being part of one of these groups, so, uh, we are looking for volunteers. How many volunteers do we have so far?
Um, we've got enough for the Milton, Stoddard, and, um, Ridgeville areas, but we need Croydon and Enterprise.
darn, Enterprise, okay.
You guys are still collecting members, too, at the last meeting?
Yeah. I asked my wife to send something out on Enterprise ladies, and she's like, "Will you write it?" I'm like, "No." So, we're at an impasse.
Enterprise ladies, I haven't heard of that one.
I have language on the Facebook page that you can just copy and paste.
Okay.
For the Enterprise area specifically.
Okay. I think we have two, right?
Yeah.
In mind?
Yeah.
Okay. That's about, uh-
You have two, and then you have-
That's about eight percent of, uh-
I was hoping there was one more still coming, but I think he is busy.
Well, as long as you have a minimum of, I think, or, we said seven, but obviously, it's possible that it's a five, so.
Okay. Um, so, this is update staff on member numbers and data first meeting for each area?
Um, I'll go first. We've had three meetings, we find, well, we, I need to finish typing up the rough draft of what our area has decided, and then me and Josh are gonna get together, go through the rough draft, see if there's any holes. Um, if he gives us the okay, then send it to the members and make an official motion to forward this recommendation to the planning commission.
Ah, there you go.
There you go, Danny.
Hey, not for it.
Yeah.
You might have to help Shane.
Yeah, where is he?
And how is the Peterson area doing?
Don't look at it.
Well, they picked, no, they put out, they put out a, a mail or a postcard to all the residents in Peterson and, and Mountain Green for a survey.
We did?
Yep, and that, we received it.
Oh, right, the consultant company.
The consultant company did, and-
Okay.
Wasn't someone gonna call and see what they've been doing with all of our money?
I did, um, I don't have the numbers this time, I talked about it in the last planning commission meeting. Uh, they've spent, if I remember correctly, don't quote me on the exact number, but they've spent approximately fifty-seven thousand of a hundred and twenty thousand something.
And haven't got anything yet?
Uh, they haven't started writing it yet, they've done a couple studies, an economic study, um, I don't remember the other, but there are a couple studies that they said that they had done, I have not seen copies of those yet, not sure why Lance hasn't sent those to me, but, uh, they would, uh, they've invited me to a meeting to attend, um, in October, I was gonna go to, but-
I was gonna say, you had the, the, uh, meeting, you were supposed to have last week, but you were out.
Yeah, I gotta say. So, the next one's in October, I'm gonna go to that one. Uh, I can't say they haven't started writing the actual document. So, they're about, they're more than a third through their budget? Doesn't look well.
Yeah, they're almost half.
What's that?
Almost half, right? Okay.
Almost.
Okay. How's Croydon doing?
Yeah, good. We're needing one more person, I guess, at least one or two.
Uh, I think two, I think you've got five, four or five, let me check. Yeah, you need, so, not, I'm not including you, three more.
Who, me, or him?
Yeah.
You need five.
You need four than that.
I don't think Enterprise has five more people. Have you been to Enterprise?
That's what I was thinking about Croydon.
You may wanna proceed without the total numbers, I know the twenty-ten general plan did not adopt the same policy requirements as the previous general plan for that, that required a certain number of members.
They agreed on it in a meeting, the number of members, that's why.
Well, you can change that, since it's not really adopted, and there, that way, these areas that don't have the members, or the people that are volunteering to show up, um, you can proceed at least with the members that you have.
I, I could get seven people, but what I didn't want to do, though, was, um, go pick seven people I knew, because that would not be representative of Enterprise as a whole.
Well, so I did something similar, but I just picked people that I knew had property from all areas of our area, because I didn't wanna pick them either, but I'm like, we have to do something, so I just picked people's property, who's attached this property, invited them to-
The, the only area that did not have any influence, or, I shouldn't say influence, but any of the planning commissioners' help was Ridgeville Porterville. We, they've had probably fifteen applications.
Okay. Okay, I will start knocking on doors.
Send out a flyer.
Yeah. I don't do Facebook, I don't do Twitter, I don't do LinkedIn, I don't answer my phone. So, other than that, I do really well. Uh, anything else on the area plan? Okay. You get an A-plus, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you can hope our-
I just don't wanna dry it out, that's all.
Yeah. If you wait till the last minute, it only takes a minute.
That's true.
Uh, okay, any, uh-
It'd have to be a mess.
Any business or staff questions?
Um, I have a staff question.
Okay.
Why, we get this letter, the first time we see it is today, the, the city one-
Yeah.
But they wrote it after two meetings, so they weren't here when we discussed it the first time, they didn't seem to care about it when we sent it to the commission.
I don't have an answer for that.
Because like, if, if I knew or thought that that was gonna be such an issue, I asked Debbie, I said, "Did we miss something, or what is going on?" I didn't realize it would be such an issue until now it's, now it's too late.
I didn't remember the date on that letter, because we made sure that we forwarded all the letters that we had received from the public and everything, and I thought that was one of the letters.
Well, but they, either way, they have it dated August twenty-second, which is after, after both meetings.
Yeah, so the county commission-
The city was at our meeting.
Yeah, they had, they addressed all-
They had two representatives, yeah.
-the planning commission meeting. I think, I think they had a lot of members of the area.
No, but that, that lady that came?
Denise.
They never said anything about the-
Was Tracy here, wasn't Denise, okay.
They never said anything about the road.
I, and I think that's because a lot of people in that area didn't say anything until after, and so then, when they started getting concerning phone calls and emails, that's when they decided to write the letter.
Well, because my next, my next comment was gonna be, if the city wants to annex it, why would they not allow a city road to let them into that property? And on another note, it's a, it's a public road.
True.
So, whether the city, like, I get it, there's gonna be a lot of traffic, but also, who picks to go down One Hundred South versus just going through the fairgrounds, you know? Those are my thoughts about it, and it's been, I've been kind of-
Those mirror my exact thoughts, I don't know how you deny a conditional use permit or deny access to a property that they enjoy access to for-
As long as it's been-
About a hundred years?
Right.
It was never, it was never set as an emergency access, it was always an access for anyone coming from Round Valley or that area.
I think they're gonna be upset when they, hopefully, the commission says, "This is a public road, we can't do anything about it, sorry." Because that's the reality.
Well, and on the annexation thing, that's just a plan, the only way that they'll annex into it is if the property-
Property owner asks, yeah.
So.
Those are my thoughts about that.
My thoughts were, it's kinda crazy, because it used to be used all the time to go to the golf course, and they used to send campers up there, and then just they built that bridge, it just detoured it, so, but it's not like it hasn't happened before, there's, that road's always been used.
I mean, it's just the expansion. I mean, you're looking at twice the number of, of RV spots, and then, you know, with the additional.
But it doesn't go, the concerning area is up on the hill. And you don't go up on the hill to get to Como. There is a road bearing off before you go, you know, get up to the Polaris, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if, if you know the area, and, I mean, people who are following GPS probably don't. You get off the highway, and then you go between the interstates, you know, to the fairgrounds, just to avoid.
Going through town.
Yeah.
But you still go through town, though, because you've got Commercial Street residents that are right there, too.
Yeah, but where you take that left turn, you're not going to hit anything.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're pretty close to the fairgrounds at that point. But people following GPS, they're probably not going to get that direction. They're going to get something like, that takes you by Daily Grind Coffee or whatever.
Grounds, yeah.
Yeah, is it Daily Grounds?
It's Grounds.
Grounds for coffee.
It's semantics, so it doesn't matter.
Besides, I don't know Facebook. I don't know how to read. Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I got one other thing. So we got an invitation from Nine Springs on email.
Yes.
I wasn't sure how to really respond. Were they wanting us to go out individually, or we need to set up a time as a group, or?
Yeah, technically, you can go, you can go in groups of three. If you do four, then it becomes a public meeting. We would have to advertise it as a public meeting, so other people from the public can show up, go on the same tour with you. It's up to you how you want to respond. We invited them to kind of, kind of discuss their project a little bit with you, you know, kind of a close sitting, so you're aware of what they're proposing.
And where is this?
Up Trappers.
Nine Springs. It's the.
Up Trappers Loop.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's, it's going to be a recreational.
Special resort.
So how come they didn't come present?
They just wanted to invite you guys formally.
Yeah, I talked to them after. I'm like, "You really missed an opportunity." And they're like, "I know, I thought about that after, but we've already canceled it." I'm like, "Oh, I'm sorry."
See that for you?
Yeah, well, you know.
Well, because personally, I'm not just going to answer an email and go with people that I do not know. I don't know, I'm not going to get murdered on the hill. So show me your face first, and then maybe I'll go on a visit with you.
Right, so you can either email them and say that, you know, just.
Don't murder me.
I will not let you murder me until I see your face.
I'm watching too much SEAL Team.
Hawaii.
We're okay to go up by ourselves, but.
You can go up in groups by yourselves, or in groups of three, or however you want. If you're not interested, then just respond, you know? Just, we'll review your application when you come forward or whatever. I mean, it's completely up to you whether you want to go up and look at the land and listen to what they have to say.
Well, I will not be going by myself, but if some two people want to go with me, I would, I would go.
I'll go with Seppi more.
What if the public wants to go?
You would have to contact the, the only way that the public could go is if they decide to go in groups of four or more. Otherwise, you could contact the property owner. It's Mark Nielsen.
Nelson.
Nelson, thanks, and Brock.
Okay, well, so we set a date, then?
You don't have to set a date here, is it, Eddie?
Yeah.
Otherwise.
We're going to let them go, by the way. Did everybody get their corrections in to Bailey?
There were.
We're good?
Yeah. No, I was, I was like, this is awesome.
This is awesome, yeah.
That's coming out in two, in five years.
Looking for a motion to approve the previous.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I said aye on that last one, in my mind, but I really didn't. That's it. You can go home now. This is like the end of Thursday.